I'd like to call the Village of North following Board of Trustees to order Monday, June 18th, 2018. Audience members are requested to sign in on the sheet provided at the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. We'll call the officers.
Keith King.
Here.
Mike Streeter.
Here.
Randy Stutz.
Yep.
Stand for the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any citizens wishing to be heard at this point? Announcements?
Any announcements? All right, moving down to President's Business and Staff Reports. Library, did you have anything from Heather or?
No, I did not.
Okay. Lakeside Municipal Court?
Yeah.
Can I just take this one?
I'm not sure if you guys are aware that we have, we hold court at the high school in Fond du Lac and it's for any citations that are written in any of the, in the school district. And most of them are like habitual or simple truancies. And I just thought I would give you a number from this last school year. Overall, we had 155 truants, which includes both the simple and the habitual. Thirty-two of those were seniors. And out of those 32, 24 of them graduated, which is a pretty good number for, for what we've been looking at. Tried to get some numbers for North Fond du Lac, but with the school being torn up and everything, there's nobody there, so I couldn't get any info, but I'll try to get some comparisons next time.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Administrator Chuck?
Just working on transitioning, you know, my position over to Nick. You know, we're starting to make sure I've got the occupation in place, even though I will be wrong for any kind of cause if things are in question, but I'm starting to get a little more into doing that in the next few weeks. I'm not sure how many people noticed at the Veterans' Memorial, the North Fond du Lac Optimist Club donated. I think we had 22 flags that we positioned all the way, a walkway going up to the memorial. I think it added a nice flavor.
Beautiful.
So, thanks to the Optimist Clubs for doing that. I hope that we do something similar to that once the stone is put on the corner of Winnebago and Prospect as well. Thank you.
Chuck, did that, did the 22 flags have any significance? Someone was telling me that they thought that had something to do with the, there's like 22 veterans that commit suicide every day in the United States. Is that, is that tied into that or?
Coincidental, but yeah.
Okay. All right. I was just curious.
That's what it can mean.
Thank you. Thank you. Police Department, Darren.
Thank you. I passed out the May monthly reports. You've got that in front of you. Know that last, the April report, Keith pointed out to me a couple of numbers on there that were kind of low compared to what we had been seeing. I think you'll notice in the May report, everything jumped right back up to what it has been. So, our reprieve was very short-lived. This past week, we released our summer newsletter. If you haven't checked it out, please do so. It's available at a number of locations throughout the community, the library, Butchers Block, here at the municipal building, the police department. And it's really easy to find on our website and our Facebook page. There's all kinds of great information in there about stuff that's going on as well, things that are coming up. So, one of the things that we have in there is our golf outing. This is the third year now that we've partnered with the school district. Right now, we still have several openings for teams. So, if anybody's interested, all you gotta do is send an email to OrioleOpen.com, I'm sorry, OrioleOpen@gmail.com. One of the things we did this year is our Thursday night party, which is out at Whispering Springs and includes a live performance by the band, The Presidents. The cost for that this year is down to $15. We reduced that cost hoping to bring some more people in. And then there's still room for golfers as well on Friday. So, if interested, get signed up soon because those spots fill up quickly. As far as North Fondue Fest went Saturday night, from a police perspective, things were very quiet. People were well behaved. We didn't have any issues at all. So, glad to report that. And this past week, we completed our license inspections for the liquor licenses throughout the community. Just wanted to thank Kurt Goudreau from Department of Revenue who came out to assist us with that. And again, we didn't note any significant issues at any of the establishments. So, kudos to the license holders for that.
Thank you, Darren. Appreciate it. Fire your mess, Jake.
Thanks. As I stated a couple of weeks ago, I opened up the Assistant Chief's spot. Eric Butler decided to step down due to schooling and his family. Adam Moriarity applied for it, and I'll be taking him to the PFC to get approved for that position. The full-time spot, we had multiple people outside of the department apply. Peter Galain, who has worked here just over a year, he applied, and we have decided to go with him. We also, this week, tomorrow actually, we'll be starting interviews for part-time spots. We had seven people apply, so we're gonna start doing the interview process with them and go from there. And like Darren said, with North Fondue Fest, we didn't have any issues. We had an engine out there for the fireworks show, and there were no problems on that end. So, that is all I have.
Cool. Thank you.
Yep.
Public Works, Nick?
Thank you. As Chuck mentioned, been spending time with Chuck trying to transition in administrator role, along with trying to clean up the other stuff with the public works and the engineering part of it. We've put together a timeline for the Alpine Circle, Bradley Avenue paving of that subdivision. We're gonna bid that on July 31st and hope that work will be done. As busy as the contractors are, I'm expecting it's gonna be later in the fall this year. We're gonna try and bid that at the same time as our overlay program and, which is including Village Park parking lot this year. We've kind of purposely did that because we wanna wait till the softball leagues are all done. So, we hit, because we're gonna have it ripped up for a little bit. Also had the Plan Commission last Tuesday night. We'll be discussing most of those issues tonight. There's a special use permit, ordinance change, along with the one thing we aren't discussing tonight, the site plan approval for the school district's maintenance building. They realigned their driveway. One of the new driveways they're adding to the Horace Mann location, or I'm sorry, Friendship FLC by the football field. They realigned it because it was overlooked by, including us, their engineer. There's a future right-of-way on the other side of Prospect Avenue, right kind of where this driveway was coming out. So, they moved that driveway, so it lines up right with that. And in doing so, they had to take down the house and garage they own, and that's what they used for a lot of storage of stuff. So, with all that said, they were saving some money. They're putting up a brand-new maintenance facility. So, we also approved the site plan for that at the Tuesday meeting. Other than that, it's just kind of been busy with, with transitioning. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Nick. Also under President's Business, just wanted to thank everybody that came out for North Fondue Fest and participated in the festival. Went to, the committee wanted to thank DPW for setting everything up, and the park looked really nice. So, everything looked really good over there. And thanks, we had a lot of, did you have some new folks out there, the shadowing going on Saturday night? Noticed a lot of police presence out there. It was nice. And like you said, we didn't notice any issues either, and no one alerted us to any issues going on. Jake's band did really good. Their afternoon filler music, like for dinner, and that was, they had a lot of good comments for you guys. So, you guys sounded really good out there. Thank the Optimists for doing the beer tent, fire department for doing their tent also, and all the volunteers that, that helped out. And, and that came out to see the fireworks too. A lot of good comments about the fireworks. So, and I'm glad that, you know, everything went off without a hitch. So, I think everything turned out good. We haven't got any numbers yet. So, anybody wants to volunteer next year, just let us know because we were pretty short this year, and that was, that was a rough day, man. That was a long day.
Is that a question to Darren about the new people?
I'm sorry.
You said you noticed extra PD out there?
Yeah. Were you doing like some of the shadowing out there, Darren, or like with some new officers?
No. The only reason that it probably seemed like there was more than in past years is because we didn't have to divide up our staff through an entire day's worth of activities. Because it was just a one-night event. It was, we were able to reduce a lot of hours from what we normally spend at North Fondue Fest and put the bodies out there when we thought we would need them.
Cool. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving down to the consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following board meeting, June 4th, 2018. Approve notice and authorized checks to be drawn on the respective funds. General Fund, $195,565.93. North Fondue Fest, $680. Library Fund, $428.04. EMS Fund, $1,086.94. Capital Projects, $137,754.66. Water Department, $7,184.70. Wastewater Department, $8,127.90. Stormwater Fund, $2,983.52 for a grand total of $353,811.69. And also approve or deny, or approve or deny licenses for Daniel Daley for Mad Max, Glenn Mathis for Outdoor Rec, Scott Boundlander for Outdoor Rec. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by King, seconded by Stutz. Any more discussion? Any questions? All in favor of approving this consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All right. Administrative, I'll take these separately. We've got three items on here. First item, discussion and possible action on approving a special use permit for 7-Eleven Lake Shore Drive. John?
Yeah, I can summarize that. There's two individuals that are business tenants at 7-Eleven Lake Shore Drive. You can see the backup that Peter put together. They basically requested a special use permit for wholesale vehicles. When we discussed it at the Plan Commission, it turned out to be more kind of a split wholesale slash retail of vehicles. Basically, what they're doing is buying totaled or junked vehicles and rebuilding them as a hobby. This is out on Highway 45. Currently, the building's being used for about the same operation. I think they're in there right now. They're just not selling anything. And in order to get a license from the state, they need to have special use permit or approved site to do this on. The Plan Commission had quite a bit of discussion about it, and in the end, was ultimately okay with allowing it, with some conditions being that they're allowed five vehicles for sale at any given time and five, five other vehicles being worked on. Anything that's not completely rebuilt and for sale needs to be completely enclosed or hidden from public view. So, we feel that we probably have more control over it, even though it's probably not the best use. We have more control over it than what's currently being done around that area. So, the Plan Commission felt that it was okay with those conditions.
And I also attended a meeting. The folks showed up and had a good discussion. We talked about fencing in the back to block vehicles stored out back from, from the view of anybody on State Street or Lake Shore Drive. So, they seemed like they were ready to go and willing to do whatever we, we asked them to do for the approving that special use permit. So, is there any questions or anything for Nick?
I would just add a comment. Whoever makes the motion to probably just mention that conditions set by the Plan Commission.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the special use permit for 7-Eleven Lake Shore Drive with the, with the additions that the?
The conditions set by the?
Set by the, yeah.
What Nick said.
Yeah, you had a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Now, we got a motion by Streeter, seconded by Stutz to approve the special use permit for 7-Eleven Lake Shore Drive. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Moving on to number two, discussion and possible action on approving the following license applications for the 2018-2019 license period. Charlie's Banquet Hall and Pub, Charles and Robin Balthazar, Mad Max Stretch Restaurant, Janice Maxwell, Jen's Bar, Jennifer Reinhold, Rumors Tavern, Karen Beasley and John Beasley. Combination Class A Fermented Malt Liquor, or Malt Beverage and Intoxicating Liquor License Business, The Butchers Block, Travis Radloff, Agent. Cornelis Prospect Express, Jeffrey Cornelli, Mad Max Stretch Convenience, Janice Maxwell, Billy Corp LLC, Dollar General Store 17883, Chris Engelhardt, Agent. Our Store, Number 56, Riser Fuels LLC, Sarah Rosenberg. Dance Hall licenses, Charlie's Banquet Hall and Pub, Jen's Bar. Tobacco and Cigarette Product Licenses, Cornelis Prospect Express, Mad Max Convenience Store, Dollar General, Number 17883, Our Store, Number 56, Riser Fuels LLC. Non-intoxicating Beverage Licenses, The Butchers Block LLC, Cornelis Prospect Express, Jen's Bar, Mad Max Restaurant, Mad Max Convenience Store, Charlie's Banquet Hall and Pub, Rumors Tavern, Dollar General, Number 17883, Our Store, Number 56, Riser Fuels LLC. Mobile Home Park Licenses, Flood Communities LLC. Class B Fermented Malt Beverages and Intoxicating Liquor Licenses, Business Mad Max Stretch Restaurant, Riser Fuels, Sarah Rosenberg. Combination Class A Fermented Malt Beverage and Liquor, Intoxicating Liquor Licenses Business, Our Store, Number 56, Riser Fuels LLC, Sarah Rosenberg. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll just make a motion to approve all the licenses as read.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion by King, seconded by Stutz to approve the licenses for 2018-2019 license period. Any questions or comments, Chuck?
Just, as you noticed that on this third page, actually, of the agenda where we talked about Mad Max Stretch, the Riser Fuels, and then also the ReStar, Number 56. The Mad Max complexes were sold to Our Store, ReStar, as of June 28th. So, they need to bridge their license from June 28th till July 1st, which is the starting period for these new licenses. So, that's what this provisional license is gonna do. It just bridges three days, three days until they would now be a valid full license. And so, that's the reason for the provisional.
Thank you. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All right. Moving down to item three, discussion and review of personnel policy manual, chapters 13 to dot, dot, dot. To 20. We can certainly delve into this tonight. We're missing two of our board members, and I'm sure they're gonna want some input into this. I know, I don't know if Mike can call you with any questions. I know he had a couple of questions. Okay. Keith?
Yeah, I would, I would just make a suggestion that maybe we hold off on this until?
Just move it to the next agenda?
Move it to the next agenda.
Okay.
Mike, you're back.
Do I second the next?
Do I second?
Yeah. All right. So, we'll just move it on. Is that all right with you, Randy?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I got a kind of a look out from the audience there if there was something on the?
Was this the item you guys are coming for?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all right. Yeah, Mike got diverted on the way back and, yeah. Sorry about that. But we promise we'll get it on the next one, and we'll have a discussion on the next agenda.
Sorry.
All right, moving down to ordinances, discussion and possible action. Was this, is this the second reading or this, is this the first or the second?
This is the first reading here.
Okay, so, we're just discussion. Okay. So, discussion and possible action on ordinance 2018-08 and ordinance amending section 21.02 sub-six. Some mobile homes, trailers, boats, snowmobiles, semis, buses, first reading.
I can summarize that. We've discussed this at, at length at the Plan Commission, two meetings worth. This has become an issue in the village lately. What we're trying to address originally was the commercial vehicles being parked in the driveway. We've done that. If you're looking at the recommendation from Peter, it's, the second item F is, is what's addressing the commercial vehicles. Item E is another issue we've, we've dealt with, that we've tried to address with the travel trailers and some of them getting extremely large and being parked in the front yard areas. We're trying to address that. Currently, they're actually not, our ordinance does not allow the parking in any front yard. It's the way it reads. We've really interpreted our ordinance to let them do that for 72 hours because we allow them to park it on the street for 72 hours. So, we're trying to clean that up and make it more black and white, allowing them 48 hours to load and unload in the front yard area and nothing longer than 35 feet. So, that is what the ordinance will ultimately read. In doing a lot of research for this ordinance, we've talked to a number of communities. Some of them have been working on the same ordinance for three years and still haven't resolved it. So, as we think this might be the best at this point, we fully expect to revisit this at some point possibly. So, just, I guess, letting everyone know, and the Plan Commission's well aware of that too, that this is a kind of a hot issue right now and very complicated. So, this is what we believe is, is the best solution right now.
And that was primarily for the one-up on Chapman?
Well, not necessarily.
Or there's a few?
It's been?
Pete had some pictures also.
We had a bunch. There's a bunch of them out there. And it's, it's, again, it's a complaint-driven type of thing that, that isn't, isn't a huge problem, but it's becoming an issue.
Yeah, the one on Chapman's, only one that I got a phone call about. Randy?
So, primarily, this is for on-street parking? Is this?
No, no. The RV part of it. So, it's, it's only front yard parking.
Okay.
So, the?
Front yard parking.
Correct. Front yard. So, between the house and the sidewalk, basically.
On the grass.
On a driveway.
A driveway.
My next question is, is would this affect a person who, this does not affect, if a person has a slab, and they would park something like a boat trailer or something on the slab outside of their house or something like that, that?
It's not.
But the thing is, it's facing the front.
Well, that's, yeah. So, right now, that's not allowed by ordinance. It's not allowed to park recreational vehicles between your house and the, and the sidewalk.
Okay.
But, like I said, it's, it's a complaint-driven thing. There's a lot of it out there. And it's not, if it doesn't cause an issue, it doesn't get addressed, so to speak. This is a little bit different issue than that right now. Thanks. Yep.
And Wade, when we discussed it at the Plan Commission, Pete said that a lot of, like, like Nick said too, a lot of other cities and villages are dealing with this also. And it's, it's kind of like the neighbor thing is, you know, one of those things. So, yeah, that's, that's most of it. So, are there any other questions?
Go ahead. Nick, I didn't, I know the first part of this. Under E, F, I hadn't seen before. Can you explain the exception to me?
Sure. So, there's, the discussion we had about this, and I apologize, we didn't throw this one to?
No, it's all right.
The discussion we had about this is there's a number of individuals that, you know, say work for an HVC company or a plumber. They have a larger van, so to speak, that they park in their driveway. It doesn't cause any issue. So, we kind of looked into that, and a number of communities do that, where they allow you one vehicle, commercial-type vehicle, if you're using it to be parked at your home, as long as it's under 21 feet and 12,000 pounds. So?
That's kind of what I thought you were gonna say. And you said this is based on other people's ordinances. I just, and I apologize that this next question, I don't know how this necessarily works.
Sure.
If I were to suggest in addition to this, would that have to go back to the Plan Commission?
Yes.
Before, okay. Then I probably won't do that.
Yeah. And that's, that was an oversight on our part, for sure. We should have run that by you first. Why don't we discuss tomorrow or something?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because?
Yep, that's fine.
There's, I don't have any issue with that if it's a?
Nope, that's fine.
Important part of it.
It's an evolving?
It is evolving. Yeah. It's gonna be discussed at some point again, I'm sure. So, it's a touchy situation. So?
Okay, so, this is the first reading, so no action required. Number two, discussion and possible action on ordinance 2018-9 and ordinance amending 16.1, 16.01 pool parking lot.
I can also take that. Lori actually was planning on coming and had something come up, and she talked to me a little bit. I also kind of have some opinions on this too. So, I know Lori had brought this up at the last board meeting. It's becoming an issue from her standpoint, from the pool parking lot, because there, there's a lot more people using the pool now. In the past, I think the discussion was that maybe only once or twice a year that they really need the parking lot when they have big events. But she's, she's saying now with lessons and the people that are using the pool, that it's becoming more of an issue. From our standpoint, from public work's standpoint, it is a parking lot for the pool. In my opinion, we have to maintain that parking lot. We have to pay for it. We have every right to use it for the pool. So, now that the school doesn't need to use it anymore because they're expanding their parking lot, I think it's a good time to just say it's for pool use only. We won't have any issues with people parking trailers in there anymore. We won't have people using it as their personal parking lot. There's also liability that goes along with that. If there's damage done to those vehicles, it's on our property. I mean, I think it's just a cleaner way to just, let's just clean it up and say, the way we read it, actually Darren Pouch wrote, wrote this, we really, we tried to encase it and make it, we wanted to make sure we covered our bases for pool staff and village employees and patrons of the pool. And Darren did a good job of that. So, so I think this is a good solution to it.
Okay. So, Nick, are we gonna talk to the school district? Because there, there's primarily like three buses that?
Yep. And, and we're certainly, you know, once we pass this, if they need to use it for a few more months, we're certainly obviously gonna work with them on that. But Aaron Sadoff already told us that we, they won't need to use it anymore.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll definitely communicate with them. We already have.
Yeah, because there's always gonna be those kids that like to go on that side by the pool.
Yep.
And skip over there.
They have plenty of parking stalls.
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna knock that wide open. Okay.
Yep.
Good. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance? All right, first reading, no action. Moving down to communications. Any communications? Unfinished business? New business?
I've got one item. It happens almost every year with the operator licenses when people apply for them. They come in at the last minute saying, oh, our license of, you know, expires June 30th. I don't know. I want to renew it. And while the agenda's printed, it's the day of the, the board meeting, so they're too late. So, I've got one organization or one company in town that's got six employees, of which none of them have a license to go beyond June 30th. So, it's a choice of the business not selling any alcoholic beverages on first and second, or I guess they could ask the board if they wouldn't mind having a, a special board meeting, probably take five minutes. We can schedule it any time of the day, as long as we have three people here, and just be approving between four and six operator licenses.
Keith?
Thank you. I don't have an issue personally. I just, I'm out of town Monday and Tuesday. So, it would have to be, if you wanted me included, if that was an option, it would have to be like a Wednesday or Thursday for me.
Randy, about you?
Wednesday is fine with, Monday or Wednesday is fine with me. I'm, I've got another commitment on, on Tuesday and, and Thursday. But anytime after 5:15, I'm available on those two days.
Next week?
Yeah. What's your day off next week?
Wednesday. No, Thursday next week. But anytime after 6:00 is good for me.
We can do it at 7:30 in the morning, too. I'm not sure if we want to do it that early or not.
Wednesday, I'll be coming back from Iowa at 7:30 in the morning. Yeah. I'm not having to get up at 3:00 in the morning.
Come on.
Should we wait and see?
Thursday, could you do Thursday at like 8:00 if you're on?
No. Yeah.
That's, that's fine.
Thursday morning at 8:00?
Would that work for you?
Give me two seconds.
One, two.
Oh, okay. I knew that was coming. Here, just, next Thursday?
Yes.
28.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. If that's okay, 8:00, 8:00 AM?
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
So, that is. Okay. Cool. So, other new business, I just, I had someone stop me today, but a question for Anderson Creek. Anderson Creek's one that we redid, right? The widened it?
That's Moshar.
That's Moshar, okay. Down past Lake Clinton, like, I think they're talking more for Lake Clinton to Wisconsin.
Okay.
Yeah. So, they're talking about trees. I know we, the DNR won't let us clean that stuff outside because that's, that's there for a reason, right? The?
Yeah.
But there are some people that clean that out.
Internally, we just had a discussion about this today. It's funny, yeah.
And, and as far as like trees or whatever?
Yeah.
Going up in the middle of the stream, can we take those out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I don't need to elaborate right now, but we're, we're actually working on putting together a plan for that.
Okay, good. Okay.
I can, I can fill you in as we kind of learn more.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, appreciate that, yeah, just someone had a concern about that, because, you know.
There's an issue with, there was never long-term maintenance agreements put together for that project, so we only had construction made, construction easements.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to talk to homeowners to do it, but Mitch actually approached me today about trying to take care of that, because he noticed the same thing, that it's just getting.
Is that one side's kind of overgrown, then the other side, they trim it right after the, yeah. Okay, all right, cool, thank you.
We're dealing with it.
All right. All right, need a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session. Number one, discussion of personnel issue under Wisconsin State Statutes nineteen eighty-one, eighty-five, excuse me, sub-one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data, evaluation date of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, or staffing. Two, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public issues, business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Number one, EMS.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion by King, second by Stutz. Can I get a roll call, please?
Keith?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Randy?
Yes.
We are in closed session.